The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, October 21st, 2020. And Brad, do you have any questions?
...... to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is the 21st meeting, and we shall open up the meeting with public comments. Very devoted comments by the general public, and discussion of these comments, no actions to be taken about or raised under these items, the agenda to a matter itself that is specifically included in the agenda, item which will be taken as for NRS 241. Anyway, a public comment.
Honey, my name is Rick Wade, and I'm... Oh, okay. Yes, I'm your colleague. I live in Pine 61, Camden, across the street from this, and I was in construction for a long time, and I've been watching them work. His work is exemplary, okay? He's done it correctly. As for the setbacks, that's you guys, but if it's anything to do with visibility or anything, that sensor already does it, okay? That's really all I gotta say. I talked to all the neighbors, and nobody seems to need this agreement. Okay, thank you.
Have a good one. Please, monitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we sit in the general room after today's meeting. I go out to request to adjourn the meeting back later, I want to offer some kind of problem. Mr. Chairman, planning member of Colonel Matensia's ex-corrector non-ADA compliant sidewalk at her home in Lock, the LDS church installed a curb there and sidewalk just a short distance from her home, and they meet the federal ADA standards. The sidewalk she has runs parallel to State Highway 318. Years earlier, she helped adopt the codes and those better. She needs to comply or resign. The laws apply to everybody, but they should. Mr. Chairman, I've reported more than once that the new parking lot designed at the convention center does not meet minimum ADA requirements. The center walkway has not been put back in to keep pedestrians off the street, especially those on wheelchairs. The center walkway needs to be replaced before there is final approval of the project. One of the lights that belongs to the city on the corner of Sixth Street and lines was removed, and a new unit was installed, not in the same location, but on nearby private property. City lights belong on City Right Way. I want to know if that's going to be corrected. I want to know, who designed that diastole? Who approved it? And who's inspecting it? Mr. Chairman, the planning commission in City of Ely today does not address the city code violations by previous and present members of the planning commission, as well as some of the city councilmen and county commissioners. They need to comply with city codes if they have formulated and adopted or resigned. You can't have a double standard. The City of Ely, Whitebriar County cannot selectively enforce the law. They have to be compliant with federal law. In particular, the age discrimination act of 1975, Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VI. I'm not seeing any of that. Mr. Chairman, I've reported earlier that Keith Carson, Keith Carson is allowed an RV and is renting a space on his trade department located on North Manhattan. When did he apply for a special permit for the RV to be placed in the trade department? Who approved it? When did he pay? Was the renter a construction worker associated with the courthouse jail project or the state hurry project? I'd like to receive an answer. They're citing other people, and I've got two different citations that I or my renter had, $255. So nature needs to stop, Mr. Chairman. Stop selectively enforcing the law. Mr. Chairman, the new marijuana stretchery clearly is getting closer, is open now. The sidewalk on 10th Street, one side of the business is blocked by rocks, boulder, and a tree or shrub. Sidewalk is not ADA compliant, and the rocks, the boulder, and the greenery is located on the sidewalk right away, which impedes foot traffic for those in a wheelchair. I told Mayor Rockerson about the ADA shortcoming months ago, and he told me not to worry, that it is being taken care of. The problem's still there, it needs to be addressed. I don't know if you've been by there, but it needs to be addressed, Mr. Chairman.
We need to get up to address these. Okay, we'll go to... I don't know. Public hearing for the proposed application for a variance, applicant's which to place a garage on the property within five feet of the property line. This would not mean required setbacks. Property address and/or general locations, 42 Fifth Street, Ely, Nevada. Accessory parcel number 001-292-07. Applicants are Kelly and Julia Lee.
Do you want us to come up now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so this is the public hearing part of this? This means that anybody from the public can be heard on this, but you don't have to speak unless you want to. They may have questions for you, so...
That's fine. I just, I thought you said there was a second part that we were supposed to speak at. Yeah, that's the thing. Okay. It's just, it has to do with the direction of our yard, and keep it 10 feet out. We don't have any yards, because the yard is all back the other way. Did you get a picture of the layout? So you can understand. And there's nothing but parking lot on that back side to move it five foot closer to our property line, but not on it. But it also, with the house that's sitting next to us on the half lots, it would also move it the extra five feet away from their garage and give us a little more yard, is what we're looking at. It also lines the garage we want to put up, but the driveway that exists. So it's got a lot of pluses.
There was a garage there at one time when we tore it down, and it's five feet from the fence line.
Yeah.
It was a lovely existence.
And what we're trying to do is just, you know, make it better for us, to save a little bit of yard. We put ten foot back there, we lose another five foot of what we could have per yard, it would just be kind of dead space anyway. And we've got grandchildren that are fairly young right now, and with putting garage up, we still want yards, so when they get of age, we put a little pool or something, a little bit of extra yard. So, do you have questions?
I have a little public comment before we open up the other end.
Okay, we have to, we have to kind of go in order, so we'll hear another public comment, and then we'll go on to another, we'll go on to the second part of it, which will ask questions.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, go.
So I have a letter or email to receive. It's from Leslie Sears, heir to the estate of Harry Frank. And it just, basically, the state's concerning the application for the variance on the above referenced property. The Harry Frank estate has no objection to granting the variance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak in favor of this also, it is a thing that hasn't been done before, and they've got large parking lot next to them, which most people don't have. Aside from that, that's just an improvement, increases the tax raise, and it also helps them. Thank you.
Anyone else, public? We'll move on to part B. Discussion for possible action, approval of proposed application for variance, applicants to replace garage on property within five feet of the property line that should not exceed required setbacks. Property address and/or general location, 402 Fifth Street, Ely, Nevada. Accessory parcel number is 001-292-07. Applicants Kelly and Julia Lee. Okay, question now, is it the 10 feet that we're talking about, is that the 10 feet between the proposed garage and the existing garage of the neighbors, or is that the five feet of the parking lot?
There's, no, it's from the parking lot side, and then our property line, and instead of getting 10 foot into our yard, it would only be five foot into our yard at that point.
Okay, so it'll be five feet from that parking lot.
Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah, there's nothing out there. And we didn't really want to put it on the property line, so we asked for just the five foot variance.
Okay.
So I have a question with that. Is it five feet from the foundation, or is it five feet from the eve?
Um, I don't, is it...
Well, leaves around there.
It's a metal building, I don't think it has much of an eaves. But if it was that point...
If I remember right, the garage last time, and I don't know if you're going the same way, but it's got, it's sloped like this on this, on both sides.
Yeah.
And so is the, what is the eve going to be on there?
Same.
And so is it, is it five feet from the end of that eve? Or is it five feet from the wall?
I think the, I think the eve only sticks over maybe, I don't even...
Really? Because it's one of the metal buildings, that's like a clearing building? I don't think they really have much of an eave.
Okay, okay.
I think they just have a cap on the end of it, but it's not...
I misunderstood, I thought it was going to be a stick though.
No, it's a metal building. Because that was another thing we were, a body stuff, is if it was going to be closer to the property line and had a different fire thing to it, but being steel.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Now, that makes, that makes a lot more sense to me, so I appreciate that. And...
No, I appreciate your mass, obviously, you guys may not be well aware with the residents that parents often used to be there, but so, I don't have any issues with this. I mean, the biggest thing that they do, the setbacks support is for access for, you know, obviously for fire, things like that. This is a parking lot on the other side, they're not going to have any issues with that access whatsoever, so I have no issues with it at all.
With us, with us moving the five feet variance in, that opens our yard up in case there is a fire for more.
Yeah, no, it's not a problem. I completely understand, yeah, so I'm totally in favor of it.
But there any negative responses?
No, I'm in favor of this. Anything to ease the parking congestion in that area too is a big plus, so...
Yeah, that'll put our parking office pretty near to our yard, because the DAF is across the street.
So your entrance into the garage will come from Camden Street?
Yes.
Okay.
There's already existed one there, and that'll put, and it should give us enough to put all our vehicles pretty much in the yard itself.
Oh, okay.
Joe, by there yesterday, you guys have got the approval ready to go on it. You got to put the ground clear and everything, so...
Yeah, as soon as we find out where we can put it, then we've got, we're setting up for the pad to be poured and the foundation, and then the garage is ready to be put up. Actually, it's on order.
Okay. We have any other discussion for it? Shell out your motion.
I'll make your motion to approve.
Go ahead and second that.
Okay, it's been approved by Jason and approved by Leah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous? It's approved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aren't we allowed to leave? Don't get you...
You are.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Okay, to go for discussion for possible action. Approval of proposed application for reclassification zone and property zoning, applicants requesting property to change from M1 Zone, heavy manufacturing district, property address and our general location, 1701 Avenue F, lots 11 through 24, block 12, plus half, abandoned alley, park addition to the Ely City Townsite. The accessory parcel is 002-084-02. The applicant is Jerry R. Martin, the big store LLC. Okay, we remained short last time.
And I wanted to throw in that I won't be involved in this one.
You're recusing?
Yep.
Yeah, I obviously can, there's my own property in that area, plus, there's public...
Andy, Jason recuse. And now, discussion on that, the...
I have received an email from John Flaherty that said that he was going to have the tenant that was putting that business there at this meeting to give everybody the details, and I did not see that anyone was here at this moment, so I don't know. I don't know if it's something that we need to vote on or whatever.
I'm gonna, I would request table, because I still have questions and concerns about what they're going to put into that structure and what they're going to do that haven't been answered, even the questions I asked a couple of months ago, because there could be a change in the zoning, could impact the housing, the care center, the other businesses in the area.
Because if we change it to a heavy manufacturing M2, then it stays that way, and that could open up for any future development of a heavier industrial sort of situation in that area. And again, yeah, we don't have enough of the details as far as, yeah, the guy wants to do a reloading on the property, but...
Reloading what?
Uh, hmm?
Ammunition?
Yeah.
Well, I have concerns about black powder and explosives being stored there also.
And, yeah, and next to propane storage and so forth.
And the apartments you've got that number...
We have, we have fuel, propane, and all kinds of stuff adjacent to the building. We have no idea how much, in the way of explosives, would be stored there, and, I mean, why is there not a possibility of it being actually performed out in industrial park, which is, which is more zoned for that than next to residential apartment complexes?
Now, there's a, there's a couple trailers across the road from that. Are those residential trailers or office trailers? Has anybody known?
I believe there is a Indian police officer living in one of those, or had been, and have been used residentially, so that concerns me also. I would really like to know more about what they're going to be doing and how they're going to, they would protect the community, because I just have so much concern about the apartment complex and the care center and anything else being right there.
Oh, and then across the railroad tracks, we have storage units, but there's also homes in the right close vicinity of that.
Yeah, that, that concerns me also, and, you know, I don't care what kind of materials you've got, I mean, all it takes is a spark.
Yeah.
So, since you've recused, we don't have any further input appearing that was supposed to appear. And I'm suggesting we table this until we have somebody here who's going to represent and give a full assessment.
I'm not sure if that's appropriate, because you guys are aware and have family issues close by. Have you heard what was going to go on, or do you have any information that we might not have?
Unfortunately, I don't think that we can comment on this.
Yeah, yeah, it's the other two.
Jim Baugh is here at our last meeting, which you missed, and he did talk about the fact that he owned property there, and he was against it being, worried about the ammunition, so, and I think that's everybody's concern, is that ammunition.
Yeah, I'm not against it.
You don't know how much or...
It's just the location that I'm against.
Yeah. And, I mean, I'm all in favor of, I mean, you know, increased businesses, but it's a matter of location. If that can, if his business can be done under the building, then fine, but I'm just uncomfortable with, with housing, and we don't know what quantities of explosives or powder or anything else like that is going to be on the premises. You know, there'd be, if a person is just going to be reloading for his own consumption or whatever, that, that could be done from anybody's property. But since this would be in an industrial sort of format, we don't have any input on it.
And I wonder who regulates this? From what I've researched, it might be the ATF. I'm not sure if they're registered with them for storing ammunition. Is anybody...
Well, I would assume it would be the ATF also, and we probably should contact one of the local offices about these things.
Yeah, there's a lot of regulations, it gets very, very in-depth, so it would be good to know, you know, if they have any, Mr. Martin, possibly registration of them or licensing.
Since we've, since we've tabled it once before, I'm wondering if there's a, I know there's a lot of these things, there's limits on how much time we can take.
Thirty days.
Hold it without causing issues with it.
Is it, is it three, in a three-month period?
It depends on, sometimes on what it is, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the public hearing's been done, I don't, I'd have to look and see. I mean, not all of them have a specific period of time that you have to make a decision. Some of them do, some of them don't.
Do we have a, a NRS that goes with that?
I'm sure we do, yeah, it's not in front of me, yeah.
I've got the reminder of Wimpin' off, but I've got 278. The third, I, George, you mentioned 30 days. I think the 30 days, if no action is taken, but with us, if we decide to postpone it, that's taking an action of sort.
I don't think so.
No, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I, I thought that too, but when I was mayor, in one particular case...
That's been a while.
Gary Fairman said, no, you have to give him an answer, or it goes through. Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Joe?
Do we have...
George has a comment.
Okay, George?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, Mr. O'Flaherty said that he would bring forth additional information, which hasn't been done, and I'm concerned about that. There was also no letter from Mr. Martin that authorized Mr. O'Flaherty to be his agent. They may be partners, that's fine. I couldn't, on behalf of my brothers, we're partners, but unless I had a letter from them, I could not move forward on any issues that passed.
Yeah.
I'm also concerned, there's been nothing...
If you're not, if you're not here, so that's not going to help you, it only covers city law, it's in the city, so the city variance rules are going to be what governs it, I don't have them in front of me, so...
At the bottom of that review, I have property. I'm concerned about the storage, I'm concerned about Ellen Wise and his property, I'm concerned about the apple sentences, and I'm concerned about the bathroom, their rental yard.
Yeah.
At the bottom of the hill is old George, and that, none of that has been addressed, and we need to address that. This needs to be turned down, the information should have been forthcoming. I don't want powder there. I think I told you in the past, the propane tanks had to move simply because of the housing.
We've got that. And I, I agree with Brad and his viewpoint too, that till we have further disclosure, you know...
Well, I don't know if we need further disclosure, because I probably would move not.
I don't think so either, I'm against it. It's pretty...
So does somebody make a motion? A motion, you make a motion? Yeah.
I move the way that way.
The attorney's trying to say that.
No, I'm just saying, if, if that's how you feel, somebody make a motion.
Does it need to be a positive motion? And then defeat it?
Actually, that's a good point, that's a good point, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if there's a motion to table, that was my point too, right?
So, we have, I guess we have two choices, we can either have a motion to table it or a motion to...
No motion, yeah, you wouldn't need a motion to not do anything.
Yeah.
To deny it?
We don't do a motion to deny, we have to do a motion to prove and then defeat it. It's, that's what we...
Well, that might be the best route since...
My block is...
You can, you know, you can call for a motion, and nobody can make a motion if they want to, or you can call for a motion if somebody makes it, then it can die for a lack of a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
It can die for a lack of a motion, so as well as a lack of a second.
Okay, then, hopefully there's no...
Do we have, is there any motion? Is there any motion on the floor? And not hearing motion, this dies for lack of a, of a motion to...
Yep.
... hold on.
Yep.
Thank you. And discussion of possible action, approval of resolution number 2020-02, updating the 2019 update of the 2006 Water Research Plan Book, approved at the June 17, 2020 Regional Planning Commission meeting.
So you guys have already approved this? This is kind of just a legal formality, because the county and city have delegated authority to make determinations, so we thought doing a resolution just for the heck of it, for recapping what was done, would be in the best interest, just in case anything was disordered, people started asking questions.
Okay. So we can use a motion to accept the resolution?
You would move, yeah, you would move a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, so I hear a second?
I'm taking a second.
Second, paperhead moves to approve, and Andy seconds, so I hear a vote to approve, all those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is approved. Okay, next. Discussion only regarding building codes within the city of Ely and Whitebriar County.
So I have still not had anybody come up to me with any major concerns on that. I don't know if anybody else has.
I know you've been plugging around a little bit on it.
Sorry?
I know you've been working, working in that area.
Well, so anyways, yeah, I haven't heard of really anything to particular on, as far as, you know, problems. I, I think this still should be an ongoing issue, and welcome, you know, welcome anybody to come to me with any issues that they've had, and we can address them, because we're, you know, we're all for, for getting more housing put in here, but as of right now, I haven't really heard of anybody in any complaints as far as that process goes.
So I did have, I did have one complaint slash observation of a person who, it didn't feel like it was spelled out completely as to exactly what they needed from the get-go of the process, and, and so I think there was some miscommunication. They were looking into putting in a modular building, modular home, and there was some issues with the extra requirements because it was in a flood zone. And so having, having something spelled out from the get-go and signed by both the building inspector as well as the permit, permit fee, I feel like would be kind of a necessary attribute to ensuring that communication is, is of the utmost respect for the two people, unto argue, we should say. And I don't know if that's done, I've never done this process, so I don't, I don't exactly understand how that's all played out, but it was just brought to my attention, so I'm throwing it out there. I do plan on speaking with Jennifer and Brad about that a little bit, but...
I can explain the process to you somewhat.
Okay.
So, it's typically a mobile home or a manufactured home that comes in and goes on a foundation. So when they bring those plans to us for a foundation, then we review flood zone, frost depth, and so forth, all of the, all of the necessary things that need to be reviewed and that. So, at that point, we let them know if it's in a flood zone or not. Some of these people have already worn these homes, you know, before we even see the plans. Could be part of the problem. Could be part of the problem.
So is there, is there a method of communicating to them that if it is in a flood zone, that they have to do these steps, and then it has to be signed off by them?
Yes, when we do the foundation plan, when it is reviewed, because they cannot get a permit even until the plans are approved for that. So when Brad reviews it, and it is in a flood zone, he tells them what requirements have to be made in order to put that home in a flood zone.
Okay. And it's signed off?
Well, when he says it's okay to issue the permit, I mean, that's, you know, when he approves the plan.
Are you meaning that it's signed off, like an understanding between the, by both parties of what's required? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. Because, because, I mean, here, what I'm running into, or what I ran into with this person is a lot of here, he said, she said kind of stuff, right? You know, the initial thing, which happens, and it's a reality. But I don't want that to happen. I mean, it's already a complicated process as it is. And so my, my point is, is be as upfront, and be as written down, and spell everything out, so that people can get the books in the room. Now, I have a feeling you already know this situation. And it sounds to me like this person, I kind of gathered, was already behind the eight ball, and now they're just throwing this out. But all I'm saying is, is maybe there was a verbal conversation at some point in time, and that's what we don't want to have, is we want to make sure that it's spelled out nicely written, so that there's good communication between the two, you know? Because we, the last thing we want is for negative, in my opinion, the last thing we want is negative outlook on an experience that could be a very positive experience, AKA, we're building a new home in Whitecomb County, you know? So I feel like, I feel like that's something that maybe we need to just look at, if I... And I don't know how to do it. I'm just throwing it out there. So...
Well, I can share with you, as a Realtor, when people buy a piece of land, and they say they're going to put a modular or manufactured home, I direct them to talk to Brad. I said, "You need to find out what the requirements are, where you're at, and what's going on." And I don't know if we, as a group, should maybe do a little public advertising about, you know, as we develop and grow, you need to check some of this stuff. Here comes the attorney.
No, I'm good. I'm just looking for time. You're okay.
Scared me.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's, in trying to sell property and get home to build here, I always refer them to the Brad first. So get the questions answered, tell them what you're going to do, and then find out. But there might be another way of getting information out of the public. I don't know either. You have a Facebook page?
We do not.
Oh, okay.
But we do have people that will call us and verify the zoning, or if it's in a flood zone and such, before they can buy their property.
Yeah.
To know what we can do with them, or what the requirements are. I mean, have them this week, but just that.
That's what I try to do also.
To alleviate some of the problems.
Yeah, absolutely. That was all I had.
Any comments?
It's behind my ear.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, I guess it was behind my ear, so I'm going to put that one over there.
And I guess we'll go on to, I don't know, any discussion of possible action, drafting a letter to the city of Ely detailing the issues with the Avenue D, Highway 93 intersection, encouraging the city of Ely to work with NDOT to come up with a solution. I assume we're dealing with that pork chop at the, at the corner.
So, go ahead. I, I mean, I put this on the agenda, because I do think that there is a legitimate concern here. I don't know what can be done about it. Last, speaking with the last meeting, Brad said that it's Department of Transportation that is involved with this one, and ultimately, they are in charge of...
Yeah, they made the decision on that, yeah.
Yeah. That being said, it's a poor design. I mean, it's an extremely poor design, and it's a dangerous design. So, you know, one or two things have to happen on it. It's either got to become a one-way street, where it can only go out the one way, or that's got to come out, or it's got to be altered to where that turning radius isn't as sharp, because there's very few vehicles over an average length of truck that can make that corner there.
Yeah, it's, it's not built for an exit.
It, it is not. It is not built for an exit at all. Especially, you've got, you have, I see all the Komatsu vehicles parked at, at the hotel there, and those are longer vehicles. You have semis that are delivering items at Wheeler Machinery, i.e. the equipment, all that stuff. And without some kind of a sign, or something that says, you know, trucks under, or trucks over, say, twenty feet are not allowed down this thing, it becomes a nightmare for those trucks. You can see where the, it's already degraded, the, that turning radius there. And I honestly, I've thought about going and taking one of our trucks to the store, and filming it with a drone, show that that radius cannot be done with a vehicle longer than X amount of feet on there. So I don't know what the solution is. If it's, if it's, if it helps with us writing a letter to DOT, I don't know. I'm sure it'll probably go on deaf ears. George, listen, on behalf of us, we hear you on it. You're not the only one on there that's, that's thinking that same thing. Unfortunately, I think a lot of stuff, our hands are tied with.
Code.
But we can, we can at least draft a letter for it, stating that it's, you know, this is not a good design.
Well, I drove it tonight, and I've looked at it quite a bit, and thought it would look too wrong to me. And I drove it tonight, and I didn't, I didn't look close to see if there were signs that said anything about trucks on that road. But driving through and turning right, there, all there is, is a right-hand turn and, and no left-hand turn. It's, it's an entrance in, and, and that's not wide enough for a good-sized vehicle to go in there, even for the entrance into it, let alone the exit out of it.
Yeah, putting the pork chop in the middle, there's limited to give the vehicle.
And my car is, is relatively small compared to whatever else there may be. I've driven big trucks, I know how much room they take. You can't get a big truck too there without running over everything that's in the way. It's just, it's not good.
And said, Mr. Attorney, is there anything that this board can do to help with this problem?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so when I saw the draft agenda, and the item that was proposed was a little more vague than this, this is kind of what Jennifer and I came up with to, as your, your potential remedy, right? The board comes up with the, the bullet points of things that it thinks are, it has concerns with in that area or not, and a letter is drafted to the city, because my understanding, it would be the city who interfaces with Endo, obviously, it's within city limits, right? So you guys aren't, you're not tasked with approving the plans of that, because you weren't in existence yet. So that would be really basically your remedy at this point, is to let the city know, or whomever, you know, I guess it could go directly to Endo, but we sort of thought maybe the city would be the, the best start, that you have concerns with its construction and design, and these are the concerns.
So is that letter, can that letter be drafted by any of us, or does that have to be by...
Well, first of all, you guys could draft letters at any time, on your own.
Okay.
You could just say, "This is me, I'm a member of the Regional Planning Commission." You can always do that.
Okay. And that doesn't need, that letter does not need to be approved by the rest of the commission?
No. If it's just from you, it does not.
Perfect, okay.
I mean, typically, legal doesn't want, you guys just, or anybody in public office, just doing letters out there, but no, not at all.
I think, I think...
But if you guys want to do a letter from the board, right, it needs to be approved.
Yes.
Okay.
And I feel like it would have more clout if we did that, if we drafted a letter. And, and my proposal would be, one of us puts a letter together, and the next meeting, we look at it and decide if we want to all approve it, and then we send that to the city.
If, if, you would like, I can draft that, if that's the way we want to go.
That would be great.
Okay.
I like, I like your idea of bringing a truck, I mean, I think that would save it more...
Impact.
Yeah, and more of an impact, for sure, because I've heard it's very difficult with Endo, working with them, and to not have, you know, maybe so many accidents or something to kind of back your letter up.
We've gone through two or three stop signs in the corner there already, and, and I think one or two markers, so, I mean...
If, if in fact, they do away with just the turn, like things, got rid of that cement that's there, and straight ahead, it would make a whole lot more sense.
Just eliminate the emergency angle, consider.
Yeah.
Well, that would be a good option. I don't know, as far as where that median is in the middle, where the railroad tracks are, I don't know legally, again, I don't know all the rules and regulations, but there, that's kind of an odd thing there too, you know? Because there's that little median there that separates the traffic from the, from the traffic.
You can eliminate that, the pork chop, but also put a sign that says, "No left-hand turn." So not coming out of there making a left on the track.
Yeah. And there is a no left-hand turn, I believe, sign right there right now.
Yeah.
But again, it's, it's, it's all of a possible thing.
In that county, it's not the real world.
Right.
And big trucking away.
I think, I think, as a, as a board, I think we should push to suggest, this is an issue, this is a concern, this is a, a problem. I don't, I don't know if in our letter, we should say anything about coming up with a solution. There's plenty of smart engineers in this world that can take care of that part, that know the regulations and all that stuff. I, I think more so, if anything, we should just say, as a board, we feel like this is something that needs to have a second look at. I mean, it, it just is something that they need to reevaluate, and just make sure that they optimize it.
I, I think one of the problems is, is because of the way it's built, if there's a truck that doesn't quite make the turn, and goes up over the pork chop, and tries to get out of there, you can get hung up, and then what do you do?
Yeah, ma- making a write-off of 93 onto Avenue D, because of that, is an obstruction.
Yeah.
If you take a large truck and do that.
I saw a lady go around a corner in, remember the, at Salt Lake, I think, and there was a big pile of rocks right there? She ended up hanging on it and rocking like this. I don't know how she got up there in the first place, but she did. And, and it's somewhat the same situation here, even though, you know, it's designed differently, but she just turned too sharp, and it was a small vehicle. What if it had been a big truck going around there and done the same thing? But, you know...
So, John, this is, because it's for possible action, it needs a motion to draft that letter as a board, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess you can ask for a motion.
Do I hear a motion to draft?
Well, actually, I, my, my two bits is, you guys take an entertaining motion to table, right? Then the item stays on the agenda, and then you, then you come back with a draft, right? There's an actual draft that you guys can vote on.
Okay, but we don't need a motion to actually make that draft, then, is that correct? Just to approve it?
Yeah, and you can just table this whole item right now. Just come back next time with your finished product, yeah.
So you draft up a letter, and then you put it on the agenda for approval.
That'd be fine.
Okay. You going to be doing that, or?
Yes, I can do that.
Super. Okay.
Thanks, Jason. So I move to, I move to table.
Second?
And there, opposed, then passes. And, next one is the approval of minutes from September 16th. Now we have one, one comment, which is, I don't know why I have to recue myself over Which is on page three, just the respelling cognizant, fact, of the reloading, reloading business. So, instead of the Italian version cognoscente, S-C-O-G-N-I-Z-A-N-T, cognizant.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with corrections.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay. All those approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then it's approved. Now we come to public comment. Comment shall be limited to three minutes. For public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, down on Stevensville, individual putting in a new modular home, foundation he put in is higher than anything around there. There were other buildings put in earlier. I was concerned in regards to a modular duplex that was put in on Ogden, in the 500 block, basically a foot above the crown of the road. Next to it is a double-wide, and they were up three feet above ground. I was told with the new design that the state was doing for flood control, eighty percent of Central Ely would be taken out of the flood area. That was by B.J. Ombre. There's a problem in this community, and it's that building inspector. It cost that young man a hundred and seven thousand dollars for engineering, which is ridiculous. You want housing? Quit playing games. I can show you six or seven or more modulators in that area that are not four feet above the crown of the road. Hundred feet up from that, there was a modular put in, and the foundation was six inches or more longer than the building. Yet they can't take a building bore stretcher to make it meet code. That's got to stop, and you've got a problem. Mr. Chairman, how many discrepancies do I have to bring before you, before you do something? I've got different pictures I'm going to give to you. In regards to Avenue D, it does not meet code. I've been to the State Highway Department, I've been to the State Highway ADA person, he says that design is on the city side. That's the problem. I've been to a congressman, he said he's going to give me a number. But he had other affairs that were more important than mine. But I'm telling you, first chance I get a federal ADA number, I'm coming after that. That road does not meet minimum city standards. It's way too narrow, there is no sidewalk, there's no ADA access for those walking alongside the junkyard. The minimum standard for that driveway is ten feet, is, the driveways may be ten feet, but the standard is much higher. And that's in these pictures that I'm going to be giving you. Back in May of 2019, I had a recreation vehicle on my property, and I was given notice to get rid of it, move it. I, as well as my tenants, were given a citation for $355. Yet all around me, we have RVs in the streets, on lots. You folks are selectively enforcing the law. You need to stop it, and you're not doing it.
Let's time it.
Okay, time's up.
I need some answers, Mr. Chairman. And you also need a sound system. I'm having difficulty hearing you people. You better read the NRS open meeting law. How many times I got to tell it now?
Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Then, in that case, I will move to the chairman, because your motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Carol makes a motion, and Leah seconds. All those in favor are adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jason, thank you for handling that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it won't be anything.
Graph, you know? Bullet points. Yeah. What would a bullet point be?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it.
Getting the flag is crossed is obvious.
Yeah, exactly.
And you get it too fast, you.
This has been a Georgetown production, George Chatchis reporting.